Good evening, welcome to the Manistee City Council. This is a special meeting tonight. Today is Tuesday, October 11th. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge the allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, will you take the roll call?
Mayor Beaton, here. Councilmember Lundberg, here. Mayor Protem Sullivan, here. Councilmember Schmansky, here. Councilmember Grabowski, here. Councilmember Martin Pontiac, here. City manager, here. City assessor, here. DPW director, here. Finance director, here. Fire chief, here. I believe that's everyone.
Thank you, Heather. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. This is limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to City Council will not be read aloud. Do we have anybody who would like to come forward to speak about the special meeting A new business, consideration of approving the submission of a grant application to the Manistee County Community Foundation Mingler Fund and committing matching funds. The city has been working with the Parks Commission to identify various park needs. The city has approved the Manistee County Foundation to submit a grant request to the Mingler Fund. The total project has been budgeted at $171,538 with $20,000 of in-kind services, $54,000 cash match, and $97,500 in grant proceeds. The in-kind services will be provided by the DPW and volunteers for construction and installation of the equipment. The cash match will be provided from the Parks Capital Outlay Refuge Fund and a donation from the Senior Softball League. At this time, council could take action to approve the submission of a grant application, the Mingler Fund, to the Mingler Fund in the amount of $97,500 and commit to a minimum of $54,000 in matching funds. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. I think we probably would love to hear from...
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll invite Jeff McCula up.
So as council's aware, in the current budget, it was carried over from last year, but we've got $35,000 that council budgeted towards Morton Park improvements. And the Parks Commission's been working for over a year on the list of different items that they would like to see improved in that park. And we have selected everything that we believe we can fund with that $35,000, but it falls a little bit short. In addition to that, there are a number of other, there are many, many items that are needed in the park system, but some of the larger ones that have been discussed recently are improvements to the softball field at First Street. Bill and I and some others met with representatives from the Senior Softball League on things that they would like to see improved that would make their use of the fields better. There's also other leagues that play on it, as well as the public. And then also, we were informed that the MRA had some desires for improvements, things that they'd like to see at Duffy Park. So the city manager met with the MRA and that included putting an electrical service out to the pitching mound and some other things. So the short story is that we sat down with the Manistee Community Foundation and got a little bit better understanding of how often the city can apply for the Mingler Funds and exactly what type of projects that they thought that they could fund. But then also, the city manager asked if we could take items from various parks and kind of bundle them up into one grant application. So they certainly thought that was a great idea. They encouraged us to make the application. And so what we are pledging to do, or are attempting to do at this point, is take some of the money that's already been budgeted for the Morton Park improvements and use that as match money to leverage additional grant funds that we can do more, almost twice as much, and include that in two additional locations. So on the screen, it lists all the items that would be included in that. I'll just run through them very briefly, but at First Street, it would include almost a reconstruction of the infield. The infield as it is right now is very hard, and even though we've reconditioned it this year, it's harder on the older people that play in that field. So they actually went out and helped us get a quote on what it would take to upgrade that. For the dugouts, we would put some shade structure over the dugouts. We would add two new basketball hoops at the basketball courts at First Street Beach. We are struggling to keep those in good shape. The basketball hoops that are out there right now are just, they're not made for the kids that are playing on them and hanging on them and stuff. So with the work, or with the help of the Parks Commission, we've been researching more stout and more durable that are, systems that are made for outdoor. So this would include adding two new baskets at that existing court. And then one of the dugouts is low, we would raise that. And then also, included in this year's budget is beginning to replace the 55-gallon drums that we currently use for our refuse collection in all of our parks and replacing those with powder-coated ornamental iron. And so I believe, we anticipate we're going to need about 120 to 130 to put throughout the park system. But this first $15,000 that's included in this year's budget roughly will replace about 15 of those. So we included that as part of our match as well. At Duffy Park, it would add that electric to the pitcher's mound as we talked about. It would include a new shade structure benches, and it would include a new piece of playground equipment for Duffy Park. And then also, we would work on reconditioning the field, but we would do that in-house. At Morton Park are all the items that the Parks Commission has voted to approve. And just running down, it includes a new play structure, rehabilitating the two structures that are there, adding benches, new metal powder-coated picnic tables, a shade structure, refuse containers, adding a water service into the park and a drinking fountain, doing some fence repairs, striping, just simply striping the grass like it's a playing field so that the kids have some way of organizing, whether that's by playing football or soccer or whatever. Adding trees into that park, some grills, a bike rack, improving the lighting that's there. And then the basketball court, there is an existing basketball court, but it is a little bit too small. And actually, when I measured it out, it's exactly one-half the size of a normal court. So it would include doubling the size, kind of pouring a new concrete pad, and then installing those new basketball hoops like I just described at First Street. The $35,000 that council had budgeted, we can accomplish about 90% of that. The biggest item that we could not fund was the new play structure. Play structures at a bare minimum are $20,000 to $25,000. The items that we looked at were simply a single slide and a new swing structure, and just those two were $20,000, plus about $8,000 to put barrier around those and put in the engineered wood fiber for the fall protection. So playground equipment is extremely expensive. So that kind of lays it out. It doesn't really, this request does not take any more additional cash from the city. It does commit additional DPW manpower to do the installation and assemblies and pouring concrete and that sort of thing. But essentially, this is taking existing budgeted funds and trying to utilize those to get additional grant funds.
And thank you, Jeff. So the electric to the pitching mounds for pitching machine to get those fields more used. And also, the Parks Commission, Laney's been helping out with the grant application as well. And a lot of this, a lot of these requests were coming through the Parks Commission, the Senior Softball, and they're committing 4,000 to this. So it really has been kind of a culmination of throughout the year, getting input from the Parks Commission. And I don't think we would have done it justice just to apply for one park. And the Mingler, talking with the foundation, they were happy to approve multiple parks in a package. So I think this is a good plan to get a lot of things done.
Do you think this equipment is, that we're putting in the parks, and this may be outside the scope of what we're wanting for in a grant, but we have talked about making all of our parks ADA compliant, would we have still room in our own budget to match and make that happen in all of our parks?
So ADA compliant, or there's universal accessibility and then there's ADA compliance. Universal accessibility is something you'd strive for, but as Mr. McCula mentioned, it's expensive for a play structure to do that poured in place. You almost double or triple the cost to do a poured in place. ADA, you can do a ramp to a, so that should be a goal. And I think actually the Mingler, you know, part of the Mingler grant is to make it ADA accessible. But that would include sidewalks and things like that, so.
Okay. That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can we go back to the prices of those things? Is that we need how many trash receptacles?
Throughout the entire park system, the existing barrels are 55-gallon drums. The ones that we are looking to purchase are ornamental surrounds, and they're about 30-gallon. So they'll be smaller, so we would need more of them. We utilize about 90 of the trash cans currently, so I'm estimating we will probably need about 120 to 130 to be able to replace all of them that we have today.
Didn't those backboards in that Down Edged Road, did we get a promise from somebody that they were going to fix all those or donate to them?
We've had offers. We haven't received any funding yet.
Has anybody called the people back?
Yes.
Okay.
And at First Street, there's six hoops down there. We're just looking to replace the first two and then, over time, hope to upgrade all of those.
What does one cost? 4,000?
They're about $4,000. That includes installation and everything.
I got a question. You replaced the 55-gallon drums with 30, did you say 30-gallon drums? And with 130, you're already stretched thin on manpower. Are you going to be able to make sure that they all get emptied and we don't have a problem with their all, like people are going to be complaining that, hey, you know, you've got 40-something containers that are overflowing and trash is everywhere?
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be an issue, and we check those every single day all through the summer.
I know, but now you're going to have 40 more containers to dump.
Right.
Okay.
Did we ever make an estimate of how many kids we did play at Morton Park?
I don't think we had an estimate of a number, but I know that almost every single person on the Parks Commission, on their own times, has spent time in that park observing. Several of them also walk the neighborhoods and just talk to people. And then they also held a public, kind of a public meeting with that neighborhood and got some pretty good input from the neighborhood before they made their final determination on the project scope.
Improvements to bring kids.
Yeah, there's really, there's just a swing set and a slide and then the basketball hoops today. So I'm not trying to speak for the Parks Commission, but what I've, the sentiment I've heard from them is we need to create a park-like setting and then add some of the play structures so that we can get the families, you know, utilizing it and the kids as well. The other thing that's, that I think is important about this grant application is the improvements to Morton Park are obviously for everybody, but this also adds playground structures for young kids, but it also adds basketball hoops for kids of all and adults of all ages, and then it supports kind of the adult softball and the senior softball. So I think we're attempting to hit a broad range of our population.
I just need to go back to these dumpsters again. Why are you, why are you going to smaller ones? Why can't you?
That's the size that they make now. So the ornamental ones, they're ornamental iron, they're like, kind of like the ones we have downtown. If you think about how we have them downtown, they're the size of a 55-gallon drum, but they have a 30-gallon container inside that we put the bags in, and then there's a surround that goes over the top of them so that they look decent.
Have to paint them at all?
These have come powder coated, and so that's actually, in my personal opinion, and I think the Parks agrees, Parks Commission agrees, that these won't all have to be black. They can be different colors for the different parks. And so the Parks Commission has also recommended the trash can surrounds, kind of a standard metal bench, and then metal picnic tables. So when we're doing various projects, we are starting to kind of standardize and purchase equipment that's more maintenance-friendly.
Okay.
Well, I'm excited about this project. It's been years that we've talked about this, and it's good that we applied for this grant.
Yeah, and if the grant, if the grant isn't approved, then I'm already in the process of getting the orders together for the equipment at Morton Park anyway, in addition to the benches and trash cans for the beach and for the disc golf. So that project's going to proceed regardless. This is just an opportunity for us to leverage and get more.
I appreciate the collaboration with all the different groups to come up with the list. I think that's great.
I think we should have an ice cream social when you open Morton Park. I'm just putting that out there as an idea.
Well, I think this is, you know, a good example of creative financing and making your dollars do a whole lot more for us. So I, you know, I applaud you and the Parks Commission for putting this plan together and just very hopeful that the Mingler will see this as being a true benefit to the city.
Yeah, the conversations we've been having with the foundation are that Manistee, the city of Manistee is the seat of the county, it's the population, you know, density, but everybody in the county uses our park system. And so I'm hoping that they realize that and continue to fund improvements and help us out.
Any more questions? Thank you so much for your presentation, Jen. I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Mayor Beaton, yes. Councilmember Lundberg, yes. Mayor Protem Sullivan, yes. Councilmember Schmansky, yes. Councilmember Grabowski, yes. Councilmember Martin Pontiac, yes.
Concerns and comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor. Our comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read.
Nothing at this time, Your Honor, thank you.
I've got nothing.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you. Go through this fast.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you.
Fire Chief, Cameron.
At the last meeting, Councilmember Bachman discussed about an upcoming work session regarding ambulance.
Come up to Mark.
You can come up here, Mark. Your staff.
At the last council meeting, Councilmember Bachman discussed about an upcoming work session that we'll be discussing. If any of you have any questions regarding ambulance service and how we operate or in us responding outside the city and inside the city, please email me or anything, and that'll just give me a little more of a heads up for that work session coming forward.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Is our police chief here? Let's see, okay, he's not here. Did I cover everybody? I think so. All right. Ms. Lundberg?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing.
I just wanted to know we finally had the cabinet up at the team center so the crew up there can start putting the winter stuff into it, so they got something to protect and we think we got something to how you put the equipment in and don't have to have it all over the city. Guys worked almost eight o'clock last night putting it up. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
That was interesting.
I don't have anything either at this point. At this time, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you.
Roll call?
We don't need a roll call.
We don't need a roll call.
Not for adjournments.
Okay, all right. Today is Tuesday, October 11th, and we are going to have a study session. Study session items include, study session items, public comments on study session-related items. Do we have any public that wants to come forward on the agenda for the study session? All right, we'll go right into the discussion on the City of Manistee Housing Commission. Housing Commission Executive Director Clinton Kevin Copes and Jonathan Usberg, Commonwealth Development.
I have provided the answers to all the questions that Bill has previously sent us. And in addition to Jonathan being here, I also have Lindsey McIntyre, President of the Housing Commission Dale Priester, and Vice President Jim Bond with us today. So what else can I help you with?
Well, as you know, I've been in a lot of meetings lately regarding housing. The Wagner Center, I think you might have been at one or two of those at some point, not sure.
Just a governmental meeting, the county government meeting.
I would like to, in honor of Mick Schmansky not going to be with us after the end of this month, I'm going to defer to him if he has any questions he would like to ask.
One is, you know, can you kind of give us a little bit of the history of how the senior housing kind of got merged with other housing elements within your realm? How did that start? How did it happen?
Can you be more specific?
Well, at one time, Century Terrace was only for seniors when it was built. And then it became problematic with other people and seniors. I believe it's really kind of like the root cause of a lot of the issues is our seniors felt uncomfortable with other people in their spaces, so to speak, youths and children, et cetera.
I arrived March 1, 2005, and discovered units at Century Terrace and Harborview that have been vacant for nine-plus years and used for storage from the previous director, falsely reporting to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and collecting subsidy from HUD units. We began, and HUD was aware of them after the embezzlement because they did stock of their property to see what was going on. So we began clearing those out and getting things ready to rent. And we had been renting to seniors and disabled and near elderly, which is 55 and above. And we were having difficulty, and I was getting phone calls from HUD because we weren't getting enough filled up as quickly as they wanted to. And I talked to the Director of the Field Office of Public Housing at that time, and I said, "Well, you know, we're senior and disabled and we're near elderly." And I was talking about the advertisements we made and the outreaches that we were doing, and he said, "Let me call you back." And about 45 minutes later, he called me back, and he said, "You're not senior and elderly and disabled. You are general population." And I said, "Okay, that's not the impression we had. Why is that?" And he says, "Our records indicate that. And if you look on the computer system called PIC, which is where inventory of all public housing in the nation is stored, and go to our particular section," he said, "Look at that and see what it says." And so we did that together, and it was general population. And the board and I at the time discussed what could we do, because that is not the perception we had nor the perception in the community. And the first thing we got was continued major pushes from HUD to get the units leased up. So we had to comply with HUD. One, they financed everything. Two, they own the property. We are just management for HUD on the property. So we had to follow their orders. And then, see, it must have been, I'm trying to remember when I did that research, probably about six years or so ago, give or take. HUD had changed its procurement regulations, and we needed to bring our paperwork up in line with who we were as a HUD property. And I was going through that, and I came across through our files the original documents from 1967. Now, you need to understand when Century Terrace was approved, a certain number of houses, family units, were required to receive the funding. And all those units, except for a few that we have replaced over the years, are from a camp, a military camp up in the UP, and they were used for family housing, and HUD bought them and brought them down here. So they began populating the Reeds Park area that was Century Terrace. They did the same thing when Harborview was built, and then we had the additional units placed to where we have 48 units in the city. So I was looking to see if we could make the appropriate change, and I was going through the documents, and I discovered that the original documents signed by the city clerk, manager, and mayor at that time required that the units be senior, near elderly, and disabled. I called immediately to the field office with that, and they did not believe me. And so I scanned all those documents in and sent them over. And they turned them over to their legal department. Long story short, is I could not find the hard copy records of that. Now, I need to fill in just a little bit, this is going to fall on me, is that in the interim of when these units came online with HUD as public housing and time transpired... of when these units came online with HUD as public housing and time transpired, HUD produced rulings that stated every five years you had to reapply if you were going to have senior or disabled or near elderly or all of them in your units. Otherwise, in the nation, every public housing unit was general population. The former director did not do any of that. And they have record that none of that occurred. Our records showed that that didn't matter because ours was agreed upon that the family units would be the families and the high rises would be elderly, near elderly, and disabled. And please keep in mind, disabled people can have children and so can grandparents like myself can have children. So children can be in those buildings, okay?
Just a really quick question.
Well.
What's the difference between seniors and elderly?
Seniors begin, in those terms with HUD, at age 60.
Okay.
Near elderly is 55.
Okay, thanks, that's all I know.
And yeah, disabled is just ADA, you know, just declared by disability. Well, I showed those records. They went to legal and they said, you can rent them back up, but you can't evict those that you have already rented to. You have to switch it over over time. And so we have, and all of Harborview meets that senior, near elderly, and disabled. And before the RAD conversion, was it, were we at all or?
I would say that we were, probably less than 5%.
So at the time that we signed the contracts with RAD conversion, December 8th of 2021, we had less than 5% within Century Terrace that did not meet elderly, disabled, or near elderly. And, you know, those will transition out over time just by attrition, you know, people, you know, move and change. And if we have more opportunities to have family sites, we can encourage people to move into the family sites. So we're back to where we began in 1967, except for about 5%. That's the short history of it. That help answer?
It does. The other question that I have is, you know, we've received and heard a number of issues and complaints about smoking in the building, potential drug use in the building. What is the policy and what is the procedure if you receive a report of either of those instances?
I'll talk about smoking first. HUD had all of us change over to non-smoking. And they gave us, because it's cost effective. And they acquired that. So everyone started moving over to non-smoking. And originally, the policy they gave us was that you could evict people who didn't follow through and were smoking in their units. You had to give them a period of time to make changes in their life. And then after that period, then you could evict them. Then about 60 days later, after HUD's ruling had been questioned by several legal organizations, they came back and said, the only thing you can do for public housing residents is to encourage them to work with their state's Department of Health and Human Services to find ways to cease and stop their smoking. But you cannot evict them. Now, interesting story between all that is I had a visit from three members of the field office staff. And we walked into a unit that clearly could...
Can you bring my water, please?
Someone was smoking, big ashtray and everything. I've got three field office people there. We take it to court with their testimonies and we could not get our judge to evict. So that's what stuck us with smoking as public housing. And that still then applies, excuse me, to our SCATTER site. However, now at Century Terrace in Harborview, once we get beyond the point where I cannot control the construction workers smoking on the property, they all were told at the beginning of construction that they have to be 50 feet away from the property and not smoking and stuff. So many construction workers, I'm not in charge of them and I can't make them stop. And so I can't enforce what now we have available to us under multifamily, which is I can evict. Once construction ends, I will provide our residents with a 60-day notice that if they're in smoke, they're smoking in their unit or anywhere in the building, they'll be evicted. Once construction's out of the parking lot between the two buildings, they're going to be buying one of those bus stop things, whatever you, I'm not sure what they're called.
Like a little shelter?
Like a shelter. And set it up so that, you know, residents can go out there and smoke, you know, trying to make it a nice place. And I'm going to see if I can pull together, you know, enough funds to maybe even make it a heated place. So for the wintertime and, you know, when it exhausts and stuff. So they'll have a place to go on our property to go smoke. I wasn't allowed to do that when it was HUD property. I could do it now. I couldn't do it before. Drugs. It's illegal, it's legal in Michigan and quite popular in our city to buy and use and sell marijuana. The police department will not enforce that when someone is doing that in a federal property. Because all federal properties are what? No drugs. Marijuana is on the list where you can't use it. So in our family sites, they won't do anything about it, okay? When I had a huge number of families living at Century Terrace and we've cleared out the majority of them when Dave Bachman was chief, we had lots of programs that he and I were doing to arrest and move people out. We had a sting operation one time from the marina watching where a drug courier was coming in through a lower window. And they caught the guy in the middle of winter, okay? In the middle of the night, when there was time on the officers, they all have keys. They patrolled the floors. And if they smelled or noticed anything, they would do that. They would stop in and try to, if they had enough evidence, knock on the door and stuff. We encourage the residents, if they're, you know, again, can't do anything about marijuana, but if they feel there's a drug problem, we don't have the authority, the police department and the state police and the county sheriff's office, they have the authority. Residents need to report it to 911. And Dave and I would always check the records to see. Because we often got reports that I called in and no officer came. Well, he didn't want that to happen because they were supposed to come. And we checked and there was no phone calls at the same timeframe or the numbers that it was coming from. We need residents, if they believe there is drug activity going on, to report it. That would be great if we had cameras all the way through the building. And Dave helped us get grants and things to set up what we do have. But because it's a cement building, the cabling and the cost to run it all the way down is quite high. You know, maybe we can piecemeal it over the year, but I'm really hoping that, you know, now that the majority, the vast majority of the people living at Century Terrace are elderly, near elderly, and disabled, that shouldn't be that much of a problem, you know, in there. And we can really knock heads with the people. Pandemic really slowed us down, you know? Some of the rules are still in effect, going to court and trying to evict people. But if we have, if the police have evidence, because HUD in all their properties, multifamily included, you can't go on eviction on a police report. They got to take it to court, the prosecutor does. They have to get the person found guilty and then we can pursue eviction. You know, you're innocent until proven guilty. So HUD now says you can't evict until you have a conviction. So we're waiting on that. But, you know, we do what we can. And the first alarm we need, residents are aware of something happening. They need to call the police department through 911 and let them know. They have the authority to do something about it. I and my staff, we don't have that authority. We can't arrest anyone. So we're doing what we can and I want them out. But I cannot remember the last time, I wish Josh was here, that we had any notification that there was a drug issue. Have you received any complaints on drug issues, Lindsey, that I haven't?
No, it's been said to me and I always follow up with the residents saying I need documentation.
So we follow up on reports, you know, that we have. But the police need the resident to report it to them, you know? Because if I report it or Lindsey reports it, it's hearsay. If the resident is aware of what happened, their first person responds to it. Did that help?
Yeah, I got a, just a couple of follow-up questions. Who was the HUD director who basically told you that it was okay to expand the?
I'll have to look up his name. He was terminated in the HUD way for other reasons, which is they moved him down a few floors. But geez, I can't think of his name right now. Because that was like in 2007 or '08 and he got moved from being the Director of Public Housing down to a lower position about 2009. So I'll have to look it up and see on that.
And then the other, you had mentioned that the policy now because of RAD is that there is no smoking in buildings?
And I don't, yeah.
So that marijuana would be included in that, I'm assuming, correct?
Yes, but no police officer is going to enforce it. We have a policy that I need to see and be sure that HUD is going to let me do because it says any kind of smoking that might be like, you know, you're boiling it and it's smoking up or incense and using that for incense, you know, a whole bunch of coverage in the original policy that was written. And if we can enforce that, then we will.
Now, that's a policy that you could share with the council, the smoking policy that you have in place?
Yeah, it's part of the House rules.
And I'm assuming this is something that is...
Yeah, it is. It is in the House rules.
I don't have the details of the management as well, certainly.
I'm assuming this is a policy that has been tested already in court?
Yes, it's a policy that goes into all, it's kind of a standard lease for overall, pretty much all in one day family.
Please understand, though, each district court is its own district court. And the judge on the bench has the ability to make the decision on the eviction. What gets evicted in Grand Rapids doesn't get up here.
Just a quick follow-up on the smoking. Are people still smoking on the sidewalks in front of residents?
Not now because they can smoke anywhere because of the construction guys. I haven't seen them smoking on the corners. I've seen them just wherever because I have no ability, you know...
I'm not talking about the construction guys, I'm talking about the residents.
I know, but our residents, I don't see them on the corners because they can go anywhere they want because I can't enforce it on them and I can't, because I can't control the construction guys, so.
And again, I'm not as into the management side, but I know in other projects where we have built some sort of shelter, usually everybody goes to that and stays there and works pretty well.
I think it would be very useful if the tenants took it upon themselves to form like a tenants' association. Because of, you know, obviously you're aware of all these back and forth comments about, you know, being unhappy, kinds of things that are going on over at Century Terrace and basically not necessarily Harborview, but for some reason Century Terrace. So when people are stressed out and they feel like this is their last place they can be, this is the only place they can live, that's their last resort and they feel some sort of, whatever that mood is, some sort of a not willingness to help them or listen to them, then they will call it things like intimidation. And for me, because I'm an elected official, if people are talking about those things in its building, then I think it behooves everybody who's sitting on city council to ask for some kind of a more thorough investigation. But I hate the word investigation. I would rather see a real outreach to help them assemble. I'm willing to help them sit on any meetings they want because it's right in my, I can walk to it. It's right in my neighborhood. I'm willing to help them if they want to do that. And I think it would be worthwhile to get some of this stuff more organized so that we can deal with it in a better manner than we have been.
We had a resident council, is what HUD calls them. And I know that there's a group getting ready to meet on a tenant group and I would encourage them to learn about what HUD encourages and wants in their property, because we're HUD multifamily at Century Terrace, is a resident council. The resident council disbanded, geez, about 2014, '15, because we had an active one going. I worked very hard. Dale Priester worked very hard in getting one in. We brought in people from the HUD field office to get one started, paid for a consultant to work with them to get everything done that they needed to be a recognized resident council. Because with the resident council then, there's a lot of rights that they have. They get to meet with management on a monthly basis, their leadership does, okay? We attend their meetings, we provide meeting space, you know, for them. There's a lot that's available as a resident council that as a separate organization isn't because it's not recognized as an official resident council. So I'd encourage them to do that because we can, you know, establish a lot for them with... And, you know, I read about and hear about, you know, intimidation and so on. I look at what we receive and the issue for me is if I don't know a resident has an issue or it's anonymously told to me without who it is, I can do nothing. If we know who has an issue and need, we will take care of it and we have a track record of taking care of that. I'm working with a resident right now who has breathing difficulties because of the construction at Century Terrace. I've talked to her, you know, every other day almost to get this resolved and to get her moved out of Century Terrace and to get the paperwork that HUD requires so I can be able to do that. We'll do what it takes to help people, but we need to know what they are and who they are. I can't help people who don't let us know that they need help. And, you know, when things need fixed, people need to let us know. I hear, well, they're afraid they're going to get evicted and stuff. We've never evicted anyone because of damage, you know? I've moved a family that caused $25,000 in damage at one of our homes to a... I've moved a family that caused twenty five thousand dollars in damage at one of our homes to another place. Worked with Central Wellness who paid part of that cost to the housing commission because that was one of their consumers. And then we put them on a payment plan and Central Wellness put them on a plan to help them be more self-sufficient and to take care of things within their family milieu. And we still ate about ten thousand of that twenty five thousand dollars in cost. That family is still involved with the housing commission. If we know there are issues and who has the issues and what needs to be done and who we can partner with, we do it.
All right, one of the issues that has come up recently is that there are residents who have told stakeholders, important people in this, this community that deal in human resources and, and human, um, you know, help agencies, that they were promised they could move back to their old apartments. And several of them said that they didn't get that chance to go back to their old apartments. And one of them in particular has been moved to a basement apartment and has several issues with that because of something very traumatic that happened to her. She was assaulted in a basement at some time, so she has real issues with the fact that she needs to be moved. Now that was at a meeting last week, so.
Let me, let me tell you how that got to be, Jonathan can fill in here too. Construction realized that the original plan wasn't going to work to move people back because we have to demolish and reconstruct two and a half stacks at a time. And we notified residents of that. And we apologized, that, that was our goal to do that. But physically by infrastructure, it could not, you know, be done. And I think I know who you're talking about and that person is, we're waiting for them to return information that we need to have in the file for reasonable accommodation. As soon as we get that, they will be moved. We don't have that yet.
And will they get help in moving? Cause this would be their third move, I guess, or their second move.
Well, and it also could be one of the people that, um, had a huge bed bug infestation that we had to pay for, um, Griffin to come in and clean things out in that unit and remove infested furniture so that they could then treat, you know, that unit. So if we have what is required in the file, which is I need to move because of this and it's verified by a provider, we have all that we need. And what would you do, Lindsay, with that person? We need that stuff. That's not intimidation.
No.
That's, that's the law, okay? And if we're gonna get our funding, we have to comply with the, the rules. So we would move in as soon as we got that.
Okay, another question to that is, uh, hi, I'm not sure how many people are not back in their original apartments, but as you know, ballots were mailed out to people who wanted to do mail-in voting. I'm not sure the number of people that may have been affected by that, so.
They, we didn't change anyone's mailbox.
Okay.
So their, their regular mailbox that they originally had has stayed the same. Lindsay and I were discussing that, uh, last week or the week before. Once construction's all done, then we're gonna sit down with the postmaster and say, we need to bring, and, cause the postal system within the building belongs to the post office. We need to bring everyone and change them over. We wanna have a sit down where everyone can fill out your forms that you need and then arrange for a different type of delivery for a day or two so everyone can get switched. Cause we don't want people to be getting other people's mail once they switch. So right now they have their old apartment mailbox. And then we have.
The guess is they, a lot of them don't really understand that, sometimes you have to repeat that kind of information. So.
I, I think, sorry, I, I, I gotta interrupt you. I think part of the problem is, is you just come off as standoffish, like, and I don't know if you mean to be like that, but when I sat in the housing commission meeting and Mrs. Goodman just mentioned to you, maybe you can be a little bit more transparent, maybe you can be open to these people. Maybe you can, you know, have coffee and donuts and say, hey, what's the problem? What are we doing? And you just sat there and you were like, kind of irritated that she mentioned that and, you know, didn't wanna do that, like, these are people, they don't care about your funding, they don't care about HUD regulations. They want what you promised them and I wrote it down in twenty twenty. You're gonna make it a place where residents are really proud to live and they're not. They have issues, they are not in the same place where you promised them they were gonna be. They don't care that the building is not the way that you are constructing it. They don't care about that. They have bed bugs, they're, they're having issues, like, some of them are men- not mentally capable of handling that. And you're coming in there and you're saying, hey, HUD regulations, we're not gonna get funding. They're not comprehending that. They're saying, hey, this guy doesn't care, we have problems. Your maintenance guys are bullies, they, they're like, yeah, they are. I have had complaints about it. They're not coming to you because you're standoffish.
I answer my phone whenever it rings. I talk to residents. I put their names when I get their phone numbers, which often change, in my system so I know because I've always prioritized answering for a resident. I am sorry, I am not in control of what has happened with construction. And I will not take that blame because that is out of my control.
That's fine, cause I'm gonna ask the person next to you in a minute.
Yeah, and, and the other thing is about the Tuesday night meeting, I have really, and my staff has really felt under attack by anonymous complaints, this and that happening, media interviews that attack board members and myself. And, you know, a person can only take so much without being given the opportunity to fix things and without knowing who has problems, what they are and how they can be done, we will do them. We had meetings before when we had ability to get into our community rooms. Right now, I can't use our community rooms. And then we had pandemic years before that where I had to shut them down.
And why aren't they open now?
Because construction is not done with them. Do you understand? I can't get into them. That building has not been turned back over to management. We're allowed to deal with the leasing, but the whole site is a construction site and under the management of the general contractor. So I, I don't have a lot of control.
You should feel under attack because look at the building, look at those people that live in there. I have no sympathy for you whatsoever. Those people in there don't care about HUD regulations. Look at how they're living. They have had bed bugs in there for seven years. And in two, in twenty twenty, when you came here and pitched this whole, the building's gonna be amazing. We're gonna spend fifty six to sixty thousand dollars.
I will not stand here and be.
Nobody, that's okay. Nobody said anything about bed bugs whatsoever. And you're the problem.
What's the plan on these bed bugs? It's a community problem, not just, I mean, that's, it's been happening too long.
So Clint has a detailed plan, working with Griffin, um, obviously, um, you know, destruction, we're in the mix of it. We've gotta really get this done to, to do that, but Clint has been attacking it. He's looking at other pest control vendors. So we can provide you tons of information on getting to that problem and attacking it. But, um, it is being taken care of.
How though?
How many, how many?
We can provide you with the plan.
Providers have you tried to get to change with this?
What, what was that?
How many providers have you tried changing to get this bed bug problem taken care of?
We, so we've gone through, and Clint can speak to more detail on this, but we've gone through with Griffin, the, the pest control. We've had a detailed plan with them, implemented heat treatments, chemical treatments, et cetera. And I, it's, this plan has been implemented, you know, relatively recently. So I think we're probably seeing improvements now. But Clint is also talking to other, other pest control companies, um, who can come up with different strategies to, to really attack it.
Now, is every apartment bed bugged or is it just?
No, no, absolutely not, nope, nope. It's a, it's a minor thing and it's contained, um, it's not, uh, yeah, it's not a, a widespread issue. That's kinda moving from, it doesn't move from unit to unit, it's not, uh, no.
You hate to read about these, you're in the papers, I love these articles and these articles about residents' rights and, do you have a meeting now with the renters to?
Yeah, so we held, we held multiple meetings, um, leading up to the relocation, uh, in the start of construction, kind of just explaining the process and, and, and going through different, uh, different things there. But like, uh, I, I think, uh, like Mayor said, it'd be, yeah, residents' rights group and having those regular meetings could solve a lot of these, you know, a lot of stuff.
But have they had meetings lately?
With the residents? Uh, I, I'm not sure if we've had any resident wide meetings, um, the housing commissioner, Clint would have to.
I just wonder why now they come through and say they're intimidated and, and all their rights are violated.
Yeah, and, and, you know, to speak to that, uh, we've, we've had overwhelming majority of residents tell us how happy they are with their new units, um, how happy they've been with the relocation team and everybody. I would say it's a small minority isn't happy with their nice new units. So I think we need to do a better job probably of gathering some of that information and sharing that with you guys because you obviously hear just the bad. What?
I'd, I'd put an article in a paper just like everybody else.
Yes, yes, we should do that. Yeah. But, uh, everybody is, I don't, it, and when we're complete, I think we're planning on having ribbon cutting and, and introduce, bringing everybody through the units and the, the nice new building because they are very nice, especially if you've seen them before, um, the new units are awesome.
When do you plan on being completed?
So we're, uh, target, are still on track to complete all the units by the end of the year. So this last three months is a real push to, to get that done. There's gonna be some spillover into next year, which will be primarily some like generator and some common area work. That'll be completed, um, and then, uh, some more landscaping work in the spring. Just because right now all the construction going on, we can't do any landscaping at this point.
When's the common area gonna be open?
The, the common areas will, I guess I'm not sure which ones are currently open and which ones aren't. But definitely, uh, so we're gonna have the units done by the end of the year and then common areas, the end of January is the target, or is the current schedule. So I think everything should be one hundred percent complete with the exception of landscaping by the end of February. Obviously it's, you know, we're running into some supply chain issues, inflation issues that all construction companies are running into, uh, but we're pretty confident we'll make that. It's obviously not a guarantee, but, uh, we're, we're almost there. So we've, I mean, we only have twenty percent, we've, we've relocated, I guess, eighty percent of the residents at this point into new units, um, there's only twenty percent to go, um, so we're, we're getting on the, the tail end of things.
And then we were supposed to get a breakdown of the costs of everything and we didn't get that.
Okay, I, I did not see that. But we can provide you so like a, a, just a breakdown of the construction.
Yeah, it was back in twenty twenty when we did this look like thing. I wanna talk a little bit about transparency. One of the first things I did, one of, um, or suggestions I made and had support accounts over is that all of our commissions should be taped, videotaped. And we, staff has worked very hard to, um, train people so that they can start the tapes and end the tapes on time. Now I know every, once in a while there's a human error, but, but the last meeting for the housing commission was not videotaped. Uh, and, and I got an explanation from it from Karen Goodman. Clinton asked, Clinton asked her to talk to me about it. I just would feel a lot more comfortable and I hate to ask staff to do anything extra, but it is so important that all of our meetings are videotaped. That if we could have staff just come up here at the beginning of the meeting and make sure the tape is on, the machine is running, I would feel a lot more comfortable. Because obviously this last meeting that the housing commission had, there was a lot of discussion and I would have loved to have heard it. I was at a different meeting at the time, but Mayor Pro Tem was in the back and she takes copious notes. So I did get a lot of information from her and from Karen Goodman as well. But it's much better if you could actually see the video and it's much more transparent that way too. So. I don't have anything else at this point.
I was just wondering, I know last time we heard from Clinton, um, he was telling us how many, um, apartments were occupied and how many weren't, can't remember the exact number, but I'm wondering, is that the same number or? Cause it seemed like there was an awful lot that weren't being used, so they were.
Yeah, and we did that purposefully, um, for construction to, you know, obviously it's a big pain. We didn't wanna lease somebody, move and then say, oh, you gotta move, you're gonna move, move to another unit again. So we opened that up just to allow for more space for construction to work and, and do that. But, um, our intent is as soon as, uh, we're, like I said, we're hoping to have the units complete by the end of the year and then I think lease up has already kinda begun to prepare people for those, those units.
And how many units are there that will be available once your construction is done?
Um, I, I'm not sure if what has already been leased up at this point, but right now I think we're at about, uh, do we have like thirty or forty vacant units?
We're like sixty percent occupied right now.
Sixty percent occupied.
And how many units is that? How many do you have off the other, and how many is that?
A hundred and sixty seven between the two, so Harborview's forty eight units, Century Terrace is a hundred and nineteen. So, yeah.
And so you're about sixty percent, so you've got like about forty, some forty or something like that available? Will be have available.
Forty eight, I wanna say, between the two zones.
Forty eight available, okay, vacant, right, thank you. I just got done finding out that, you know, we're not in a har- hu- housing shortage, we're in a housing crisis. And I keep thinking about these places as, you know, wow, we can't get them going soon enough. I would hope that it would help. I really do hope that we figure out some of these things that, um, don't seem so pleasant amongst the folks that are going on because, uh, it's a beautiful location to be right on our river and.
And again, I, I walked some of the units today and they're, they're really nice. And we can't wait to show, show everybody else when it's complete.
But I think we might have to do some PR work before that because I don't want people to think like they're going to a place that's got bed bugs and they're being threatened and intimidated, that, we don't want that. So whatever, and to clear that out and get, you know, the right forward, I think we'll be very happy.
I think we have a long waitlist of people excited to move in, so.
I'd be interested to see the, the policy and procedure on bed bugs. It's been mentioned several times and I have, I have a long history in the hospitality business. Bed bugs are not a tenants' issue, okay? And if you have bed bugs in one area, trust me, you have them in more than one. They are carried from your shoes, they're, you know, the, the biggest way that the hotel business gets bed bugs is on your luggage. You take your luggage and you put it on the floor of your room, right? And then where does that go? Goes all kinds of places, right? So it's really hard to tell where those little bed bugs came in, but guess what? You're gonna bring them into your house. But it is, it is a treatable process. Every hotel, from the finest hotels to the flea bag hotels, have issues with bed bugs and they can maintain it and control it and they don't make it a tenant issue. We don't blame the customer for an infestation that is very broad and widespread, but we treat it. There's infrared treatments, you know, part of it is, is being able to close down that space long enough to treat the infestation. You can't do it while they're still in there. You have to basically move them and then you have to treat. And usually in the hotel business, we'll treat two rooms on both sides of the one that was infested, plus the carpets in the hallway. If that process isn't done, then my guess is that there is more than one room. They may not be. one room. They may not be prevalent. They may not be to the point where people are complaining because they have them on them, but it will.
Yeah, yep. We're, we're well aware and we're working hard to, to get the issue resolved. And I, I don't want to speak for Clint, but I'm sure we would share our strategy that we've gone through, uh, or that we have kind of set up.
I shared the strategy with our city manager and, um, asked him to share it and apparently it wasn't shared. Um, so he knew about our strategy of attack that we began in September, outlined in detail. And I can, I'm, I'm sure at one point you guys have received the bedbug policy, but we'll be sure you get the entire house rules.
We'll, we'll get it and it's, yeah, it's a lot of, a lot of what you mentioned.
Well, it's, it's more my concern isn't so much the house rules is how, what the process is for actually treating it. Once you determine.
I can answer some of those. The, the house, when we treat them, we treat unit up, the two sides and below. Okay? We do that and the, and the hallway. All right. Where it becomes a tenant unit is when they're hoarding. And we have several hoarders in the building. And that's a mental health issue. It is declared a mental health issue. It's quite difficult to make changes when you have a hoarder and no matter how much treatment we put in, and it, they're, they're still buried in the items. Uh, and in those cases, um, we, I have contacted Karen Goodman for assistance from her caseworkers because a lot of them are under the care of Central Wellness. And we've asked the caseworkers to assist in preparing the units and for, and helping the residents to make the adjustments so they, we, we can get a proper treatment in there and remove the bedbugs. But there's only so much we can do if there's an overfilled unit. Thank you.
Is there ever going to be a point where they're not considered HUD properties?
They are now.
They are, they are not considered HUD properties. So what?
They're under multifamily. They're the same as Hillcrest.
Okay.
They're still governed by.
My confusion is you've mentioned a couple of times that we're following HUD guidelines. So at this point, I'm totally confused. So which guidelines should you be following if it's not HUD?
It moves from public housing to Section 8 vouchers, um, or the Section 8 program, which is also a HUD program. So there are still inspections, there are still certain lease forms, guidelines along those lines, um, but not as much scrutiny, I guess, as public housing or, or oversight potentially.
Well, and, um, yeah, the regulations are different so that you can interact more and do things, you know, with the residents. So, um, but we're still under the Code of Federal Regulation, Section 8, that's where it all comes from. You know, and what we try to comply with the federal regulations is because residents only pay in our property, in Century Terrace and Harbor View, they pay no more than 30% of their adjusted gross income. And we serve those that are at 50% of AMI in the county and below. We go no higher than 50%. So we serve the poorest of the poor. So it's essential to maintain compliance to get the full subsidy on each unit so that we can operate. And when we ask tenants to fill out the forms that are required for their subsidy and for the Lytec that is funded, the low-income housing tax code that has funded this change, that's their participation in allowing us to continue to move forward. Lindsey tries to explain in great depth and, and whatever understanding so people understand what the forms are and what they mean.
Aren't the rents going up about 8% though on units?
No, the, the fair HUD requires, and now for our public housing, switch hats, think of the scattered sites.
Okay.
There's a regulation that once a year you have to set the fair market rent for your units. Federal law says you take the, uh, rent that is HUD established for the unit size in the county. And they have every county in the nation figure it out. And then it can be no less than 80% of what they have figured out for the county. That's setting the fair market rent for public housing. But that's because each time they recertify, they're provided the option by law to choose to receive subsidized 30% of adjusted gross income for their rent or fair market rent. We have to provide them that choice. And so there can be no choice if the fair market rent isn't set. So we don't charge them that. Yes, they went eight, up 8% in our county, but we have to give them the option to choose. We have had a few cases over.
Huh? That's up to the individual resident?
Right. And, and a case where it makes sense for the resident would be if their adjusted gross income, and we've had this in the past with families and two people working and stuff, where their adjusted gross income is greater than what the fair market rent would be, they choose the fair market rent because it's cheaper than the 30%. That's rare, but that's why it's set. And that's why we have to do that. But we, out, out the door is 30% of adjusted gross income.
Any more questions?
I just wanted to clarify. So I'm writing down some notes and, and you guys said in both Harbor View and in Century Terrace, all of Harbor View and all but 5% is senior living or whatever you're called that, senior and 55 and older or whatever, living. And, right? Is that right or no? Except for 5%?
But, well. And disabled.
And disabled.
Do you want to explain the HUD regulations on the requirement that it's a preference? We could not make it a declaration that only those people come in.
Yeah.
So it is a preference. So you're seeking them out?
I don't explain it, but it, I don't know how to explain. I think it's.
I'll explain it. It'll.
At the top of the, basically there's a waitlist and the preferences given to residents.
Yeah.
We can, we can choose to, or we do choose to.
Okay. So you are trying to actually have it be back to a senior living situation?
Potentially, I think if there wasn't anyone that fits elderly, disabled, and you could potentially rent to somebody else at that point, but I.
We set the points at such a level that if you're elderly or disabled, the preference points are going to put you to the top. Okay? Um, because HUD won't allow in multifamily properties, Section 8 properties, you can't say you're only serving this. There's different properties that, but that's not what these are under. What we are allowed to do is a set of preference and it had to be approved by Fair Housing. And so we have set points so that when they apply and they say they're, they're elderly and they put their age down, you remember the point numbers?
No, they just get higher, they're higher up on the, on the waitlist. They get placed on the waitlist when their application is submitted. So it's stamped and we get put on the waitlist. And when they're on that waitlist, they get a preference of those. Any one of those preferences will shoot them to the top of the list.
So we're trying to keep it that way. Under the rules we have to follow.
Do you have a lot of applicants for, are you accepting applicants right now for January when the, when the construction is going to be done?
So we just started, we just made contact about two and a half weeks ago with every single person on the waitlist asking if they're still interested. So when we do have that go, we can just start getting.
And you have, you have people on the waitlist?
Waitlist applicants, yes.
Pretty good sized waitlist. Are you optimistic that you're gonna?
I would say, I mean, I'm very optimistic. Yes, they would have to go through the eligibility process, but I'm very optimistic about it, yeah.
Thank you.
I want to say it's between 45 to 50 for a one bedroom and then it's around 30 for a two bedroom.
Thank you.
I'd like to know when your financials are going to be complete.
We've had a conversation, was it last week or the week before, with, um, the, with BDO Financial, who's hired to manage the books for Century Terrace and Harbor View. And they're working with the auditor for public housing to split the assets from Century Terrace and Harbor View have to be taken public housing and then split for the public housing. And the person at BDO who is doing this was off for PTO for several days. She's back. And I and our auditor have been in communication with her manager and her. And, um, you know, we're, we're, um, we're on them to get it. The, uh, our investor is wanting these, you know, we're, we're pushing for these. I can't operate without monthly financial, you know, statements. And we're trying to get that done, but it is a large split. And right now, once they make that split from BDO, our public housing auditor has to agree to the numbers. And once he agrees to the numbers, then they can become real and then they can finish the financial statements for that building, for those buildings. And then I can have financial statements for public housing.
I'm curious. But they're completed up until May, right?
They were until May. They, they were started, um, and I got drafts of them and there were large errors, missing income that was being supplied from HUD and missing expenses that needed to be on. And so my staff and I have been working with BDO to get their entries corrected, um, into the software system that is used for the properties. And also they're telling me that until they get the numbers of the split, they can't really produce the financials, even though we have sent them everything, all the income that's come in for, um, those properties and all the expenses, um, you know, all through their portal. We have receipts and copies of everything, um, that has been done. We're waiting on them to produce those documents. Um, I'm, I'm told that this is not unusual for RAD conversion, for this to happen. But I can't work on my 2023 budget until they get my 2022 figured out here.
I'm, I'm just confused because the Housing Commission meeting from July, they, you said they were completed up until May. So.
They were. And then I worked with BDO and there were errors in them. They did not book, for example, the, we not, we're not getting the HAP contract, which is the subsidy for the Section 8 until January 1. So HUD is providing public housing funds for that project as a bridge. They weren't recording the monthly money that was coming in. We just received 297,000 from HUD to put in for that support for operations. And that was sent over, we just got that, uh, two or three weeks ago, and that was sent over to them. And the last time we had that conversation, they had already been sent, but it, it wasn't in the books. They hadn't got it in yet. So, um, I know we've got people from Commonwealth that are meeting with them and, uh, I from the management side, Jonathan's in those phone calls, our auditor's been in those phone calls. We're trying to get them pushed to make the, the number cuts so that we can have a decision.
I have a question on assets. Might seem trivial, but it's been bothering me. Um, when you're talking about the assets, you have a number of vehicles that the Housing Commission owns, correct? Have the titles been changed to reflect, or the, what name do they get, is going to be on the title for the assets for things like vehicles?
I, I need to review with our attorney the closing documents on how those assets were set in the closing document. I had requested they belong, remain with the Housing Commission. I'm not sure what the final closing documents came out as. So I need to get clarification from our attorneys on that. So I will ask that.
That's a strange thing for me to think about, but I've been wondering about that.
Yeah, because it would cause problems. They're listed as governmental vehicles and we have governmental license plates. And there'd be a lot of changes that would have to be done. So.
I'm pretty confident the title hasn't changed yet.
I'll confirm that though and, yeah.
I would really appreciate it if, if you would really work with the residents more. And, you know, and I, I trust what you're saying, but I, I think there's an overwhelming desire to have more communication and more communication and understanding between the residents and the management. And I think that Jonathan, you need to be a part of how that's going to take place. So I would be very happy if I could see a plan to make that happen. I, and I think we're, you've got great people out here in the audience who have worked with, uh, some of your clients. I think, uh, they're probably going to need some help in setting up, you know, a, a tenants', uh, association or whatever you want to call it. But I do think that would go a long way toward resolving it a lot faster.
We're in the process of hiring a, a public relations firm to assist us with all of that information. Um, because of all the changes we've had, the Housing Commission staff is stretched extremely thin and we need additional bodies to get work done. It's not just me, it's an entire staff. So we're, we're trying to get additional help in to take care of this so we can, you know, get our space back in the building so we can meet in the buildings, get residents invited, have staff present. Uh, my idea is to have you there.
I'd be happy to be there.
You know, um, and, uh, to have our president and vice president and just to be a listening session. But, uh, I've just begun the process on behalf of the properties over there to work with someone who can help us tie everything together and address all the issues.
So do you think we can see something happening, at least within the next 30 days?
I hope so. I.
I do too.
I had a conversation this afternoon and with, um, a firm that I have to take it back to the, our partners for approval. So.
Anybody else? Thank you. Discussion on Commercial Rehabilitation District. Economic Director Mark Miller, City Manager William Gamble, and Finance Director Bradford Grant next. Who wants to speak first?
Um, I'll set it up and then I'll have Mark come up.
Yeah. June 3rd.
So back on June 3rd, we had members of council, the DDA, kind of go through a few of the buildings that require quite a bit of work to become rehabilitated. We went through Fricano's. We saw what an Oprah could do for a property like that with a good partner that works through issues. Um, some pictures here. This thing, this is over at the Northern Hotel property. See some members of the DDA and also, uh, City Council. You can scroll down. This is also the Northern Hotel.
Keep going.
Northern Hotel. So there's, there's quite a bit of work to do on some of these buildings and it's, you know, one of those where they have to put in quite a bit of money and it's almost, it's, you know, you might put in 2 million to increase the value, 1 million. So it's, these are the kind of properties we saw. Um, you can keep going down. This was, there's definitely a lot of potential in these old buildings, but they do require a lot of work. And I think the more. And I think the more we're going through this issue with rising interest rates, liquidity issues, also, you know, it, there's a lot of building, it's just hard to get construction and supplies are still high. Keep going down. This was the Jones Dairy property and then this was also Fricano's. So one thing we talked about was, and we'll bring up the map of the district. So we had kind of an idea of if we kind of, there's two-step process with commercial rehabilitation that we did over at the Hampton Inn and kind of discussing if we created a district. And Mark Miller, Economic Development Director of the County, they kind of pitched an idea of a matrix about certain investments, certain outcomes could lead to, you know, us granting a rehabilitation or, you know, a rehabil, a CRA or an Oprah. So we just wanted to talk about the idea of creating a district to kind of incentivize development. We have a lot of properties that are getting interest in this area. This, so the blue outlines the DDA district and then just kind of squared off some of the commercial areas that potentially could see development or there's been interest in the area. So I'll, I'll bring up Mark Miller, talk a little bit about the matrix and, you know, the thinking behind this.
Good evening. The, the key point here is that we do have interest from developers to take on some of these either dilapidated, obsolete would be a correct term, property or, or some other element of commercial redevelopment inside the, the key areas in our, our downtown. And, you know, we, we are working with a couple of developers. We, as, as Bill mentioned, we toured the Hotel Northern. We also looked at the Jones Dairy Building and Fricano's, but the Hotel Northern property with that development, the, the goal there is to get to 15, 13 to 15 long-term apartments. The construction costs, the interest rates, other elements of the, of the project are coming in much higher than anticipated. And as, as they told us on the tour, their budget was $4 million to get the asset up to a $2 million value. And so that already kind of tells you the, the uphill struggle and for a developer to take on a historic preservation priority like we have identified with our ready redevelopment-ready community sites. So in order to help streamline that process, in order to make a statement to other developers, you know, it would be a, a positive step to create this district, identify where you would like to have development. And then that will help us make it, be a little bit easier for us to compete with other communities, to bring in that investment, make it easier for them. They will have, already have one of the two steps in an Oprah or a CRA completed by City Council, so they can come in with an application. And one of the things that we've talked about requiring is a look at a pro forma to show the numbers to City Council. And we, we actually had that meeting with Northern Hotel last week or, last week or the week before. But that was very informative and it showed us that there was a significant gap for that project to even break even with that expectation of putting four in to get a $2 million asset. There is a, another development, 348 River Street, that received their construction bids today, the preliminary construction bids came in much higher than they were anticipating. And they will whittle that back and then work on a pro forma and do the same thing, come in and meet with the city manager and CFO and show the need for something like an Oprah or a CRA. By moving this forward, you can streamline and cut the, the timeline down for a project. One thing to note, you know, you all took the action to create a district and approve an application for the Hampton Inn and Suites project. Just last week or the week before, the Michigan Tax Commission finally approved that of, that abatement on their end. And so that just shows you how long it takes for some of these things to be put in place. And if we can streamline that, make it easier, make a statement that we're ready to compete against other communities for, for investment dollars, I think that would be a positive step. So I'll stop there and maybe you can direct me on anything else you'd like to do.
And maybe Ed, if you can come up and talk a little bit about how we came up with the map, the taxable value. A lot of the capture in the DDA is kind of, it's already, it's, it's going to be DDA capture, correct?
I'll talk a little bit about the, about the map in front of you. The, the area in blue is the current DDA district. So those taxes are already being captured by the DDA. And then the areas in red are areas that we'd like to have included or considered to be included in a commercial rehabilitation district and also an Oprah district. They would be contiguous, congruent to each other and they would incorporate most of the DDA. So as an example, the total taxable value of the real parcels approximately in the DDA district there is about 18.8 million. And the total taxable value of that whole district, including the red parcels, is 26. So there's about 7.2 million dollars of taxable value currently in the red parcels. And that's, that's not a, a big percentage of the city. That equates to about $123,000 of, of city taxes. But what creating these districts would allow you to do is if there's a worthy project, that district is already set up and the developer that can then choose from, do I want to do an Oprah? Do I want to do a Commercial Rehabilitation Act abatement? You're not going to do both. And then also is there a brown field incentive? Am I going to get any money from MEDC? How much money are my investors going to put in? What are the banks going to look at? But each of those projects, just by creating the district, doesn't mean that City Council has to approve any projects, but it's, it's a two-step process as the city manager explained. And this would allow that district to be there for developers to know that those are incentives that the city supports in this area. And then if a worthy project came forward, it still has to go in front of City Council. But this area that we kind of highlighted here seems to make sense in terms of capturing the core business district. You can see it extends down First Street a little bit, captures the 31 corridor, the peninsula, and then a little bit on the north side, kind of square things off. So it kind of makes sense, it's compact and contiguous, but it's an area where, you know, developers have had interest, but, but as you know, those buildings are again expensive to go through, right? Sessor, Molly and I and Sharon went through the 384 River Street building today to take a look at it and, I mean, there's a lot of investment that needs to happen in that building and without tax incentives, help from the state and that things, those types of projects aren't going to happen. It's just the reality of the world that we live in now, especially with interest rates starting to go up as well. But even without that, even if we weren't having those issues, it's very costly to renovate these buildings. So this just gives the city and City Council tools and kind of a leg up, you know, we're, we're supposed to be a redevelopment-ready community. This is really sending a message potentially to developers that we're ready for development. We want you to come take a look at this. And obviously, most of the property is already in the DDA, so those incentives, you know, the DDA wouldn't gain any additional tax capture for those until those abatements ran their course. But at that point, then they're going to capture most of those taxes, so it's going to be really good for the DDA long-term. And on the city, it's the same thing. If somebody, you know, takes a few rundown houses or something and wants to put a commercial building and they need help to do that, you know, there might be a tax abatement granted, but eventually that tax abatement runs out and then that taxable value goes on our tax rolls. And otherwise, you probably wouldn't see that type of investment in development. So that was the idea is to make it friendly for developers and kind of make it rational and make sense.
Yep. Mr. Bradford, the, the red-brown areas that you indicate, there, there is no intention of including this into the DDA. This is.
No, no.
As highlighting this as another opportunity, correct?
Yeah, so, so, so the, there's a, there's a, there's a DDA district, kind of think of it as a circle, and then there's a CRA district, think of it as a circle that encompasses the DDA, but we're not expanding the DDA. We're just making that district include the DDA plus a little bit of extra. We can't expand the DDA because at that point, it triggers the option for the different taxing jurisdictions to opt out and then you defeat the purpose of having a DDA.
Thank you.
So we anticipated several different, I mean, Gateway, the Northern Hotel, a couple of these other, and sending in one of these applications soon. We've had strong interest over at the Music Bowl property, also Northern Hotel. So the thought was, if council was agreeable to this, I think when we get to the point to set up a district, we could kind of do this with like an Oprah application after they've gone through the process of, as I said, the, the pro forma being vetted and everything like that. But this could be kind of a first step and then just kind of clearing the way for additional applications to come in.
I know we talked a long time before, Mark Miller, about we're already developmental, development-ready or whatever that was. So how, how does this make us any more development-ready? I don't, I mean, I thought we were already there. So what's the difference?
What's the difference? So the city of Manistee participates in a redevelopment-ready certified community program through MEDC. And what that does is, at some point in our near past, went through and certified with certain practices or ordinances or other things that were positive towards redevelopment and, and did that. And Denise Blakesley, who was a planner several years ago, ran through that program and checked off all of those things that helped the city be certified. What that gets the city is additional help and attention from MEDC, either through grants or match-on main grant program that we've participated in and other things such as that are part of that, the, the benefit. They also promote our priority sites and there's about six or so right now that are listed with MEDC. May not be on their website currently, but should be as, as soon as we hope to have them there. But the Amor Sign site, Northern Hotel, River Vault, River Street Station, the Gateway Project, the Council on Aging site, even though it's not downtown, is included. So those are the sites that are listed as redevelopment-ready. It could get special planning attention from the, from MEDC. So that's redevelopment-ready community. In order to do this, this is something that we can do that would be a good practice to signal that we're a couple steps ahead so that they can come in and apply for an abatement if they have a viable project. And so it, it isn't part of a program through MEDC, but it is something that would put us a step ahead of a lot of the surrounding or regional communities. And it would, it would identify the places where you would like to have a streamlined redevelopment program. It doesn't mean that, say, a housing project would come in or some other type of project would come in and would want to have a Commercial Rehabilitation Act abatement that was not downtown, they could come back to you, but they'd have to comply with the request for a three-acre district and, and do other, other steps and go through that process with City Council. So by eliminating that, we just hope to make it a little bit easier and, and hopefully attract more development. Because there, there, we are fielding interest in these areas for development. Not all of them are ready to, to come forward and sit down with city manager and CFO, but we hope that this will be something that will encourage them to get through their due diligence phase and, and start to do the things that they might, might, you know, do to, to actually make it happen.
So my other question is, so what about our historic downtown stuff? How is that going to impact that, you know, being historic, whatever, whatever that's called? The historic piece?
HTC.
Yeah.
So all the rules and regulations that, and authorities that apply with the HTC, contributing buildings and so forth will be in effect. Nothing will get shortchanged there. And so that authority will have a say into what happens in the HTC district, which is actually even smaller than the Downtown Development Authority. But they will be able to weigh in on, you know, a project like Northern Hotel. That's a contributing bid, building in the HTC. They need to take a certificate of appropriateness to them, have them look at the plans, look at the colors, look at everything that they like to look at, and then they will make a determination. But that will have to go forward through that process, will have nothing to do with the CRA or whatever.
All right. My last question, is there a cost to do this differently or is this just, is there nothing? It's just we're claiming this as a new area to be ready to develop?
This is free. This is a, an action that's absolutely free. The next step, and you all will have the ability to weigh in on the next step, when an applicant comes before you with a, a request for an abatement, you'll see all those details and be able to, be able to take a vote on that. That will be the thing that will be the decision point. This is just one more decision point to kind of do as a preliminary step and, and get that out of the way so it's easier.
So Mark, if, to clarify, this basically takes care of smaller properties currently that we can't do because it doesn't meet the three and a half acre, correct? So by making this large venue, we basically make it eligible for an individual small parcel because they're part of the bigger district. Is that not the way this is designed?
That is how you would look at it with the Commercial Redevelopment Act. So that is, that is one benefit, that you, you can kind of combine all of this and just make it one district without having to parcel it up and divide it up and.
And in some cases, you couldn't, right? Because if it doesn't meet the three and a half acre criteria, you won't be able to use some of these.
Correct.
Opportunities that we're going to make available for here.
So in the downtown area, if you had a particular building, and I'll, I'll just pull one out that's an RRC site, the Amor Sign site, that's only 2.3 acres. So in order to make that a Commercial Redevelopment Act site, you'd have to pull in some other properties around it. Maybe it's the, you know, the, the Hart Building or this Dairy Building across the street, but you'd have to do that in order to make that happen. So you all would have to make that, the staff would have to contribute to that.
This way, we wouldn't have that issue.
Correct.
Now, is there, is there a possibility that we could create another district like this in other areas of Manistee? For example, the old US 31 corridor that goes through Maxwell Town.
Absolutely.
Koziauskil Street?
Yeah.
Neath? Okay.
What's the downside?
Potential tax loss, potential.
Yeah. From a development standpoint, there won't be a downside when we have a project come in for an abatement. You'll hear that information. You will freeze the property taxes, the current property taxes for a period of years under whatever program you use. And so there won't be any downside immediately. But at the end of that term, after the value has been increased, say it's 10 years as example, then the property tax rolls go up and they pay full value for the, the full valuation. And so that's the benefit. So our property tax base will, will, will increase and this will incent developers, either local ones or, or ones that are coming in from outside, that will incent them to take a, a chance on a, on a project that may not pencil out and be able to make it happen and actually increase, increase our property tax rolls. With the other benefits also there too, right? Could create jobs, could create housing, you know, it, it could create a better quality of life for our residents with a restaurant or, or something else.
So this is all business-related though, right?
Invested, yeah.
Yeah. But you, you can, you can have housing. So that's another thing that we could use an Oprah for and, and so that, that's possible.
Thank you.
And I think one thing we've learned over the last couple of months is it's, you really need a strong, good partner because these are challenging buildings and you need someone who's going to work through, you know, when they have issues and overcome supply chain issues. So we're hoping to partner with, you know, actually good builders, good developers that are going to be good partners and see a project through. Any other questions or?
I think it's a great initiative. I don't think you're going to get people to make those kind of investments unless we create those opportunities. Nobody's going to put $4 million into the Hotel Northern and pay taxes on it when they're not going to get that kind of return. It's going to take them a long time to make up the investment that they have.
Yeah.
The reality is they won't do the project.
Right, it just won't happen. It'll just end up being dozed over and/or stay as a dilapidated structure.
Turned over to the land bank after it falls into the street.
Exactly. You'll have to clean it up. And then even selling a vacant lot isn't an easy thing, so.
Well, thank you. It's a lot to mull over. It sounds good, though.
So I think next steps will probably, I think we have a DDA meeting, we have a DDA meeting tomorrow, talk to them about it and probably when we get another, you know, an Oprah application, which we expect, or kind of this will come back before council with the districts. Thank you.
Motion, will you adjourn?
If there's no other, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Nick, would you like to make the motion?
Motion?
Motion.
Sure.